All right. Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Natalie Jektorowitz, and I'm president of the District 34 Board of Education. I'm joined tonight by my fellow board members Jim Baumstark, John Haggy, Katie Jones, Mike Corman, Scott Nelson, and Diane Stefani. Also joining us tonight is our administrative team, including Superintendent Dr. Dane Delly, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning Dr. Matt Silverman, Assistant Superintendent for Business Services Eric Miller, Executive Director of Human Resources Dr. Heather Hopkins, Executive Director of Student Services Mary Garrity, Executive Director for Instructional Innovation Brian Engel, Director of Communications and Strategic Planning Kathy Kajigian, Director of Operations Steve Rowelly, Director of E.L. Bilingual Programs Raquel Kim, Assistant Director of Student Services Kirsten Casillas, District Nurse Kathleen Lee, and our Board Recording Secretary Katie Siegel. The first item on our agenda tonight is approvals. We have two approvals tonight for consideration. The first is the approval of tonight's agenda. Board members may have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
So move. Jim Baumstark?
John Haggy, second.
This is a voice vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. The next is approval of last month's regular and executive board meeting minutes. May I have a motion and second to approve the October 19, 2020 executive session and regular board meeting minutes?
So move. Katie Jones. Second. Diane Stefani.
Again, this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. The next section on our agenda is communications. And so we will start with superintendent comments, and Dr. Delly is going to take over.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining our board meeting. I would like to begin this, I have several items, but I'd like to begin this evening by taking this opportunity to provide our school board members with some special recognition. But before I do, I'd like to first remind us all just a little bit of perspective on local schools and school governance. There are over 50 million children who attend public schools in the United States in grades pre-K through 12. And there are about 98,000 public schools across the United States in some 14,000 school districts. Illinois is home to 879 of those 14,000 school districts. Glenview District 34 is, of course, one of those districts governed by a seven-member Board of Education. And the Illinois Association of School Boards has declared November 15th as School Board Member Day. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our school board members for your service to the community. Too often, for some, people forget about the personal sacrifices that school board members routinely make, attending many committee meetings, school board meetings, reviewing board documents, and spending time away from their own families in service of this community. This month, we join with others from throughout the state and other school districts to salute our board members. And so we thank you, Natalie, and Jim, John, Diane, Mike, Katie, and Scott, for your dedicated service to the community. And in years past, we would show you a small token of our gratitude for our school members, but I can rest assured that they were delivered to the doorsteps of our school board members as a small token of our appreciation. So we thank you very much for your service.
Thank you so much. I think I can speak for all of us when I say it's an honor and a privilege to serve our community. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to call everyone's attentions to some donations. They're on our consent agenda, but I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight a few things. Really, while COVID has really forced all of us to make changes in our everyday lives, COVID is really no match for the generosity and love that exists within our school district community. And we have several examples of this. A special thank you to the Glenview Rotary, which has, again, donated backpacks to students in need, as well as more than 1,200 books and 1,000 reams of construction paper. This is a perennial show of love from that organization, and we recognize you publicly for that. The Gelfan Foundation partnered with Glenview-based Kraft Heinz to collect, assemble, and distribute 300 bags of supplies, materials, and books to students in grades early childhood through grade two who are facing hardships during the pandemic. We thank both Kraft Heinz and the Glenview and the Gelfan Foundation for their efforts there. And thirdly, the Gelfan Foundation has also donated little free libraries, which you will see starting to pop around in the month of December to each one of our school buildings. And it should also be noted that these libraries are being built by their little wooden libraries that can be put out so people can share books, are being built by Springman students in the SOAR classroom. And so there's much pride associated with not only the students being involved so deeply, but also the generosity of so many in the community, and we're very thankful for that. And at this time, I'll introduce Brian. I think Brian, you have a special guest or two to introduce for a brief presentation for us. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll let Matt do the initial introduction, and then I will jump in. He's so much better at doing introductions, and I'm just, I tag along sometimes.
Well, on behalf of the Teaching and Learning Department, really, because this presentation you're about to see exemplifies the passion and the drive of our staff and our students to bring engagement and hands-on learning, even during this pandemic, this remote educational model that we provide and that we're now all going to experience throughout November and December. It does not stop our staff from knowing what is best for our children and making that happen. And I'll have Brian introduce our special guest, because this is just a really awesome opportunity to exemplify the types of experiences that we have for our children.
Yeah, so I'm going to introduce Tammy Slater. Tammy is one of our instructional innovation specialists. She's currently positioned at Glen Grove, but throughout this academic school year, she's been both supporting Glen Grove as well as the GOAL program and helping to both support the innovation and instruction that's taking place there, but even going as far to deliver some of these kits to students' homes whose parents have been unfortunately unable to make it out to our pickups to come in. And so when kids have needed stuff, she, like so many, have run out in the middle of the day just to deliver the package. So she's going to talk briefly, quick presentation, on what has transpired with one of the activities around inquiry and discovery and how that has supported our students and the activities that they've done. Tammy?
All right, so I'm going to share my screen so we can see the presentation. So thank you, right off the bat, for allowing me a few minutes to give you a glimpse inside our GOAL classrooms with inquiry. So to jump right in, I want to start off with this quote, which actually the Glen Grove Inquiry Team loves. We used it a bunch last year while we were still in person. And as you read it, I want you to think about the many questions you ask yourself throughout the course of a day. How many of those will you ultimately Google? How does your first original question lead you down a path of asking more that will ultimately deepen your understanding of that topic? Instilling the love of wonder and curiosity in our students is something that we strive for on a daily basis. This presentation is divided into three parts. We have why, how, and what, which will provide you with a glimpse into one of our inquiry lessons. So we'll begin with the why. Why is this important? Inquiry can be found in the district's strategic plan, most notably in the goals for student success and well-being and educator growth and support. You can see the two strategies that are listed. It is imperative for students to see that there is more than one way to solve problems by providing them with the experiences. It is our hope that their out-of-the-box thinking carries over into all of their content area learning. The third piece is the SEL component. The lessons we create do not require any sort of math or science prior knowledge. They allow the students to move around, work with their hands using different materials, talk with a partner, or build in a small group. So oftentimes, we see students excel who may normally struggle in the academic setting. Each lesson that we teach focuses on two to three of the dispositions that are listed, such as being a problem solver, being resilient, or being creative. How did we go about this? How did we make it work? Well, given our current situation, we knew that the way we taught last year was not going to happen this year. We needed to revamp all of our lessons to ensure that we were following all safety protocol. Therefore, we worked to find new ways to bring inquiry into a remote setting, hence the mystery bag challenge. Supplies were picked out and bagged up for all of the third through fifth grade GOAL students. We worked to ensure that each child had a supply bag before their scheduled lesson. So whether it was myself dropping them off to the students' homes or Dr. Silverman patiently waiting in the mobile for the parents to come and pick up the bags, I will say about 95% of the students had the supply bag in hand for the start of their lesson. In these images, you can see some of the sample supplies that were provided to students. So there may have been pipe cleaners or straws, popsicle sticks, a small piece of bubble wrap, paper cup, to name a few. What? What did we do? So we had the students work through the district inquiry process to go through one of two challenges. Third and fourth grade students worked on a bubble gum rain challenge. So what they were tasked with was to create some type of device or mechanism or invention that would protect the community from the bubble gum rain and help to get the people unstuck. So they had to create something that would, again, protect everybody and get people unstuck. Fifth graders worked through imagining that they woke up, shrunk down to the size of an ant, where they had to create something that would help get them out of bed and to school on time. So coming up with these unrealistic fantasy-type challenges, first of all, engage the students right off the bat. You can kind of see them smile or chuckle like, oh, that's never going to happen. And it just really grabbed their attention right off the bat. So some of the unique creations will be shown here. So both of these were inventions for the bubble gum rain problem. The girl, her invention, those two straws, were little straw suckers. So they would go around and suck up all the gum from the ground. And then the people would then be able to climb in, and I think they were able to stay inside of the cup. And all of, like, the cotton balls had a certain job, and the playing card had a certain job. The other image here, he used straws and attached the cotton balls to the end, and he used them as little tweezers that would go and pick up the people that were stuck on the ground. And then they would somehow move into the airplane or helicopter, whatever type of device he created. So just very original thinking, things that I would never, in a million years, think to put together myself. And here we have third and fourth graders that are creatively thinking outside of the box to solve these challenges. Last slide I have for you is going to show a couple of video clips. We'll just watch one for the interest of time. But this was a student who will walk you through her creation.
Hi, Miss Slater. So, um, this is my, my, so I'll explain. So, oh, sorry about this one. So, in here, I cut back, and I made it like a little place where the people can go. And then I have two straws holding it up. Okay, so the overhang is tape paper and cards. You can see that. And then here, we have something that can keep the bag dry. And go in there, and do that. Then, over here, we have these go back and forth to make sure the gum doesn't get on the scooters when they go out to get picked up. This is made of cotton balls. They're attached to the string so that people can pull them in. Water. These are skis, so that makes it go faster, so that can get rid of gum. And they, these, they're in the back side. And then the red is tur, like, tur, like, not turbo, but like, I don't know what to call them yet, but yeah, they just help it to not get stuck in gum. So I would say the gum on stickers. My creation. Hope you like it. Bye.
So as you can see, just the creativity of using the string and even the Ziploc gown bag itself, cutting it apart and cutting it into pieces, and then having names for the parts, was just incredible to see. And each child wanted to share out. They wanted to share their small group. They wanted to share with me so that they were able to show their creations to their friends. It was just, again, incredible to see the creativeness that they have.
I think one of the key things that we talk about and we've presented to the board about is when you're going over innovation or inquiry and discovery in that process is that the great component is that there is no right answer. This is an opportunity for kids to use their creative thinking and to use the skills that we have been working with them in terms of collaborating with others or thinking outside the box or, you know, being resilient when something doesn't work, to come up with their solution and then defend that solution. You know, I brought up this activity to my sophomore daughter, who is very linear in her learning, and she's like, well, I don't like that. And I'm like, well, why don't you like that? And she's like, well, because there's no answer. I want an answer, which is unfortunate, which is what I expressed to her. And it is part of the thing that we're trying to get away from and that kids need to know, you know, we're in a situation now where there is a, there's a bunch of different answers that people are trying to come up with as it relates to this pandemic. And for a child to understand that there is no one right answer right now and that people are putting out ideas, and they're working on projects, and they're working on things, I think is an example, these activities, of what we want to have our children turn out to be as they get older. And the ability, doesn't matter the topic, that they'll be able to come up and use their imagination moving forward. Dr. Silverman?
Just to also bring the collaborative elements for our general education, our homeroom teachers, our content area teachers, this also actually expands their comfort and their ability to actually connect our Common Core standards, our content standards, and sort of see the application. That's the key piece. And I've had many comments, pandemic or otherwise, about the impact of our innovation specialists, the co-teaching, the collaboration of the classrooms, the comfort, and again, that sense of it's okay for children to approach a situation or a problem, however they need to, to get to, as Brian was mentioning, the solution or the creative thinking. And then they discuss it, and it is a perfect fit with our writing process and our writing experience for children as well. So there's a lot of crossover. There's a lot of interdisciplinary connections. It's just amazing. And to be able to showcase it, and honestly, to talk about our children tonight, you could see I'm glowing and burning, and it's just this reminder. And to see Tammy, because she is amazing, and she does whatever it takes. And it's true that she went to our family's homes to drop off these kits. Now, come on, that is commitment to ensure when she was delivering the lessons, because they were in their living rooms, the children were prepared for success.
Any questions?
I'm just going to say, thank you for these inspirational stories tonight. This Slater, you and your students are incredible, and we applaud you. Thank you so much for all that you're doing for those trips to the houses and all the work you do setting all that up. So thank you for that. And I also quickly want to say thank you to the Rotary on behalf of the board as well and to the Gelfan Foundation. So it's nice to start our meeting with so many inspirational stories that are, things that are going on in our district right now. Dr. Delly, do you have anything else you wanted to add at this point?
I have two other items. And since we're all enjoying the celebrations, I'd like to share another one, if that's okay. And that is, I'd like to share my congratulations this evening with 17 staff members on reaching a major milestone in their career as having attained tenure by starting their fifth consecutive full-time year of employment in school District 34. Those individuals are Jessica Adams, David Banus, Karen Brynwood, Emily Brigette, Amy Dryer, Melanie Foley, Robert Glassner, Monica Glazner, Glazer, Laura Harris, Megan Hoffman-Junk, Kristen Crosey, Keely LaRue, Ellen Leving, Sarah Mervis, Jennifer Parker, Nicole Wilkerson, and Erin Wilkins. The evaluation system in District 34, for those who may not know, requires that non-tenure teachers be observed by their evaluators three to four times each year in four specific domains: planning, classroom environment, instruction, and other professional responsibilities. In addition, these staff members created student growth plans and use this data, along with building NWEA data, as part of their evaluation process. By achieving tenure, evaluators have, through direct observation and consultation, determined that these staff members have the knowledge, teaching skills, work habits, and professionalism that are needed to be successful in working with children. This is a decision that building and district administrators have weighed carefully, knowing that granting tenure is a decision that involves a long-term relationship and investment by these individuals. We're very proud of their accomplishments, and we look forward to working with you for many years to come in District 34. So I extend my congratulations to those individuals. And now with an awkward transition, I'd like to, that's less festive, but I do want to use this opportunity to remind our community, those listening, the board, and others about our movement toward an adaptive pause. And as we communicated last week, District 34 will enter an adaptive pause for the time period beginning Monday, November 30th through January 19th. November 23rd and 24th have been designated as remote planning days for teachers. The decision to enter adaptive pause was arrived at after continuing to monitor regional, county, and local ZIP code catchment areas relative to COVID and receiving information directly from the Cook County Department of Public Health, specifically that operating in-person learning during substantial community transmission was deemed a high-risk activity. All 12 cells of the Northfield Township Dashboard, which we have available on our website, remain in red. And all of our internal district numbers continue to climb. While that has been updated daily, and the numbers that I have are accurate as of yesterday, 56 total positive cases that have accumulated, new cases, three. I can tell you for a fact that number will grow when the dashboard is updated tomorrow. 267 close contacts, an additional 17 based on our update. And so as I said at our last board meeting and in the communication, the numbers continue to go in the wrong direction. Cook County has since issued a stay-at-home advisory for the next 30 days and has recommended highly that schools consider alternate forms of instruction like remote learning, which we have a plan for as quickly as feasible. Please continue to check the District 34 Flex page and look for additional communication from the school district as we assemble more information to share. I do thank you for your continued partnership with the school district during these trying times, and I wish you and your family a very healthy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. That concludes my comments for the superintendent's report. Thank you.
All right, before we go on, I want to quickly add the board's congratulations as well to our newly tenured staff members. We thank you for your work. I'm just going to briefly ask the board whether they have any questions or comments for Dr. Delly. This is the only opportunity we sort of have to talk about the adaptive pause before it begins. So just wanted to see if anybody has any comments. Scott Nelson?
Dr. Delly, I just wanted to make sure the community understands that adaptive pause is different than remote plus, correct?
Yes. Well, in this model, all students will be learning in a remote fashion for the time period that I indicated. There may be very specific and special circumstances where certain children who perhaps need to be brought in for an evaluation relative to their special education status or something that has unique qualities may bring them onsite. But as a rule, all learning will take place in a remote fashion as we've outlined for the time period I mentioned.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, we will move on to the first of two opportunities for audience comments. Anyone wishing to address the board may do so by submitting a comment via a Google Doc that can be found on our, a link to that Google Doc can be found on our district website. Kathy Kajigian will read all submitted comments. We ask that you state your name and your connection to the district in your comments. We also ask that each individual comment once per each opportunity given. The board will be taking note of all comments, but we will be in listening mode only and will not be responding tonight. We will provide an appropriate response in a timely manner. Kathy, are there any comments at this time? And if so, could you just let us know how many?
There are no comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. So then we will move on. The next item on our agenda is consideration of resolutions, also known as our consent agenda. These are items that are either routine in nature or have been previously discussed by the board. We have six items on consent tonight. They are Resolutions 2127 Personnel Report, 2128 Approval of Payroll Warrants, 2129 Approval of Vendor Warrants, 2130 Workman's Compensation RFP, 2131 Board Policy Issue 105 for Action, and Resolution 2132 Acceptance of Donations. May I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I so move. Mike Corman?
Second. Jim Baumstark?
Katie Siegel, may I have a roll call? Jack Torowitz?
Aye.
Corman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Haggy?
Aye.
Stefani?
Aye.
And Baumstark?
Aye.
A motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to consideration of other resolutions, and we have one item up for approval, resolution 2133 Tentative Tax Levy and schedule for a public hearing for the 2020 tax levy. And I believe Mr. Eric Miller will be handling that discussion for us.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we took a look at this presentation a little bit in more detail last month. So I'm going to be brief as we go through this tentative tax levy and ask the board for an approval on the tentative and an approval on publishing the notice for the hearing to be held just before the next board meeting in December. Tax levy is a certification by resolution. It's extremely critical to the operations of the district as it provides or is estimated to provide over 80% of our local revenue for the year. This is a list, again, of some of the things we do know, which is last year's extension and new property. This is a list again of some of the things we do know, which is last year's extension and new property. We do know the 2019 calendar year CPI is 2.3%, so that's an increase percentage-wise over last year's extension. Some of the things we don't yet know from the county, new property values, final tax rates, the county multiplier, and existing EAV. But some of the assumptions we're making is that new property comes in at 12 million. However, this levy at 4.87% accommodates up to $55 million in new property. We're assuming that the existing EAV will not increase as it's not a reassessment year. However, we'll see about that. Tax collection, 98.8%, which is very consistent for the district. And we will not ask the county clerk to increase the levy by 3% and also direct the county clerk to reduce any necessary dollars in a particular fund, which is usually the ed fund. This slide just kind of shows what we collected last year, where the tentative levy stands, what the estimated extension is. And just as a reminder, in the cap funds, while the levy is 4.87% above last year's extension, we actually anticipate an increase in the cap funds of 2.87% because we levy for more than we think we might get, given all the unknowns that, that are still out there. Remember, the levy is just a request. All the extensions are based on PTO. Extensions may be increased across the boundary, but the individual tax bills go up or down relative to, to their neighbors. And the bonded interest levy is outside the cap funds, and it's based on a $40 million bond issue. Later in the meeting, we're going to get to some of CFAX recommendations and some things that Liz has to say from Raymond James. Likely that number will go up. And so at the December meeting, if the board gives us that direction, we'll show the increase in the capped funds as well as the non-capped. At the December board meeting, we'll hold a hearing, even though it's not necessary by law. In the spirit of transparency, we'll, we'll post a notice in the paper and allow any community members to make a comment if they so choose. And that's all I have.
All right. Do any board members have any questions at this time?
I have one quick question. On the collection rate, the 98.8%, I think that's the assumption we just use historically. Just, just given sort of the financial climate and, you know, the fact that tax bills were extended due dates and things. Like, is there any early read on how good that assumption currently is, or is it too early to know? It seems like an assumption that's at risk possibly because of the pandemic.
You know, it's surprisingly enough, in the years following 2009, our collection rate stayed similar. Collection rates change over time. But even given the delay that the county gave taxpayers for this last issue, we've almost all but caught up at this point in time. And I still think over time, 98.8 is a, is a reasonable assumption. I don't suspect it will go down too much, even, even given what we're going through and given, you know, what happened about 10 years ago. But obviously, we'll, we'll monitor that and keep a close watch.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. May I have a motion and a second to approve 2133 Resolution to approve the 2020 Tentative Tax Levy and Schedule a Public Hearing for the 2020 Tax Levy?
So I'll move. Funny.
I'll second then. Diane motioned.
Sorry, Scott.
That's no problem. Zoom etiquette.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote.
It is.
Baumstark.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Tiffany.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Jack Torowitz.
Aye.
Corman.
Aye.
And Peggy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move on to the discussion section of our agenda. And first up is the Teaching and Learning Presentation about the Illinois School Report Card. And I believe Dr. Silverman will be facilitating that discussion.
Yes, thank you. Prepare to be razzled dazzled by the Illinois School Report Card. Sadly, I'm just kidding. I'll, I'll try, but here we have on our screen, hopefully, you can see the 2019, 2020 Illinois School Report Card. Most of this information has this danger warning symbol next to it because the data is either not available due to the impact by COVID-19 as it is indicated, or there is some combination of data that may have erratic results. So I'm going to take you on a quick tour. It is our obligation from the state to ensure that the Board of Education and the public knows that this report card is available. I am at the Illinois State Board of Education Report Card site. So all of this information is open and accessible to the public for review. Just a couple of reminders of the basic elements. And again, you're going to see a lot of this possible COVID-19 impact. The information in terms of the Illinois Assessment for Readiness was impacted. Absenteeism, much of what we were working under last year was act of God in terms of attendance and absence marking that sort of recording. So this is a general overview in the district snapshot. When we take a look at academic progress, we don't take a look at much because there was no whole-scale or wide benchmark assessment traditionally provided during the spring to all of our children. And traditionally, again, we would have reading and math assessments or ELA and math assessments. It's now called the Illinois Assessment for Readiness. And you'll see that there's no data for the 2019, 2020 school year. Same thing with our DLM assessment, our science assessment. When you take a look here, it's going to be showing you old information. So no data available for 2020, just as an example of how either it says it's impacted by COVID or there's no data. The growth, again, it would be year-to-year growth, is not available. So this gives you a feel in terms of the academic progress. There's historical data, but nothing for 1920. When we move to the district environment, again, you can see what is available and what is impact or what was impacted. Some information in terms of our evidence-based funding and a couple of other elements in terms of the district environment. And each one of these subcategories then might have some specific data. Climate survey actually originates from each school. So you would be able to move through these different categories and see again what was available for last year. That's the tricky part. We're talking about 1920. And of course, the spring having a significant impact on that data. When we move to students, again, this is last year's information. Most of it originated out of the beginning of the school year when we're talking about our statistical information and our backgrounds of our families and our children. So that was pretty steady. Again, though, attendance, you could see possible COVID-19 impact, mobility, absenteeism. So there, again, each category, you're going to see some possible impact. In terms of accountability, just a reminder that we're actually looking at 1819 IAR data that, which has a significant factor on our summative designations. So prior to that school year, we actually had a school Springman on targeted designation. And we received Title I funding to help our Springman staff and our families and our children sort of move into another designation in terms of school improvement planning, differentiation, looking at ways that we can have a social, emotional impact on children. And everything through that planning resulted in all of our schools being in the commendable designation or exemplary designation. That's two-year-old data. Interestingly, the reason why this one school received funding, it's a three-year funding cycle. So this is the last year for Springman to receive that $36,113. And again, it's just an added element to their school improvement funding to sort of ensure that they're looking at all performance levels, all of our children in ways that we can provide support and move through those designations where our ultimate goal is to move all of our schools in a growth metric and a growth factor. And that's exactly what they did at Springman, which was awesome and resulted in commendable and exemplary schools. In terms of our staff and our teaching information, again, you could see some elements were impacted by COVID, possibly. And some of it is just sort of year-over-year information, demographics, all this kind of subcategory information. Same thing with our administrators, a little bit more stable information because it's just a smaller group of people and their impact on the district and the information the state collects. When we drill specifically, we could see each school's designation. For our pre-K2, K2 centers, our primary buildings, that is a combination of their sister school IAR data and then some other designation factors. And it's a formula that we've talked about in previous years where that designation is indicated. So that's kind of the overlay where some are exemplary and some are commendable and the kind of difference in terms of that. And if you love this sort of thing, you can go way back in time and go all the way back to the ISAT and other wonderful mandates that our state and feds have imposed on us to improve our system. So that really is the overview I wanted to provide. And I'm happy to answer, answer any questions. But, you know, again, right out of the gate, we would be typically looking at a lot more depth and a lot more analysis and growth. But unfortunately, with last year, it had an impact.
So I'm, you've pointed out the obvious, that there's not a lot of data there. And so in that respect, it doesn't tell us a lot. But what it, the one thing it does tell us is it foreshadows the challenges that are waiting for us when we get on the other side of this. Once we do start collecting data, I think we will find a lot of things that will challenge us and a lot to talk about at that point. So I'm going to turn to the board and ask if anybody else has any comments or questions. I'm not seeing any. So Dr. Silverman, thank you so much. We will move on to our next discussion item, which is construction planning for the summer of 2020. And Eric, I believe you are going to start us off.
Yeah, actually, I'll just introduce Dave Torres from Nicholas, along with Nick Boppa Jr.'s on the panel as well tonight. Going to ask these gentlemen to guide us through an update with the estimates that, that have been compiled and good design work from FGM. So with that, I'm going to ask Dave to share his screen and kick off the updated presentation.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Can everyone hear me okay? All right, great. I want to take a few moments of your time this evening just to kind of bring you up to speed with where we're at in this overall estimating and budget set of phases and ultimately look at, at what this first phase of construction looks like. So it's been a while since we've been able to chat about numbers or anything like that. So I figure I just kind of dive right in and kind of bring you guys back to sort of our, my first presentation on budget to give you a recap of the overall design phases or stages, just to bring you some context to where we're at today. So there are more or less three stages in the design. And the first is schematic design, then it's design development, and then construction documents. And those are SDs, DDs, and CDs. So if at any point in time you hear me refer to those, that's what, that's what I'm talking about. So back about a year ago, we did our first construction estimate on the whole big package at about a 60% schematic design or SD level. We are now currently wrapping up our estimate at the design development phase. So as it relates to the overall design effort, we're still only at about 35 to 40%. So that being said, we are completing our, our round of estimating. And I wanted to kind of, again, bring you through a little bit of our estimating process and methodology. For this round of estimating, we partnered with Concord Group once again as our third-party estimator to help compile a very detailed estimate with a lot of, lot of information, lots to be processed. We also utilized our relationships with subcontractors for providing feedback on various unit costs and things of that nature. That's been a lot of what we've built our budgeting success on. And then this final stage, design team reconciliation, we take our numbers. We pass it along to FGM, to the folks at IMAG, the designers, the engineers, to review our numbers to more or less confirm, you know, that our takeoffs are within reason, that they meet the design intent. It just helps provide an extra set of eyes on the numbers, so you're not just taking what I say as gospel truth. So that said, this, this estimate specifically at design development was not the entire package, but it was the vast majority. So there are still a couple of placeholder values that we're carrying from that 60% design effort. But that's kind of pushed out further towards kind of the final phases of construction as we get into years 25, 26, and 27. So I want to kind of give you a total budget snapshot of where we're at right now. So as we get into the next couple of slides, give you some context. Now I'm going to hit the next slide here.
Hey, are you, maybe I'm the only one. I, I don't see slides.
Yeah, we don't see slides.
We aren't seeing slides.
Oh, I know. Here, let's try again.
I'm sorry. I thought part of it was, was just you teeing up, so I didn't want to interrupt, but.
How about now? Can you see it now?
Yeah, yes.
All right. Well, fortunately, you didn't miss a whole lot. I'll go back. So this is the slide that I just walked through here. And this will be available for you all. But I know you just want to see the numbers, so I'm going to push forward here a couple of slides. So as we finished, this estimate was kind of broke out into two individual phases because we've kind of talked through everything else and then Springman. Springman's been, always kind of been its own animal. So as we wrapped up the, the estimation on pretty much everything else, we learned that we're tracking about $6 million over our target of 150. So that said, it kind of triggered a need for us to look at, at value engineering, ways that we can either reduce scope or modify scope to help bring the numbers closer to where we need to be. So that said, we, we worked with FGM and the design team to identify 25 to 30 different individual scope items and categorized it into these eight here that you can see as part of an accepted value engineering package that helps bring us closer to this revised project total that you see here below. Additionally, we're tracking some deductive alternates that will help us to continue working towards that $150 million goal. Again, this is a, a work in progress. It's a constant evolution between design and reconciliation with numbers. So we're working very closely with FGM and the design team as we continue to push forward in the overall design and estimating process. All right, this next slide is a basic outline of everything that's inclusive of those numbers that I just presented. So as of this estimate, we are carrying design and construction contingencies at about 10%. Those numbers on the slide previous included all our CM fees, general conditions, which primarily includes our supervision, insurance, bonding. I provided a little bit of context as far as what the total percentage of, of that project cost includes. Our estimated reimbursable general conditions, this is more or less a budget. We feel very strongly that there are certain items that can be considered general conditions, but are really only billed on an as-needed basis. So this changes from project to project based on the scope of work, but includes things like a construction trailer, any temporary power. But includes things like a construction trailer, any temporary power utilities. Construction toilets, fencing, dumpsters, materials, et cetera. I've also included placeholders for the design fees, the architectural MEPs, civil commissioning called inspections. We are working with an escalation rate of 2.5%. And again, this is based on really the project timeline and phasing that we established from the beginning. For the most part, the phasing is intact. We've made some, some minor tweaks, but we can go through that. As we move on to the next slide here. I'm also carrying some various allowances for abatement, new furniture, mobile casework. Technology, moisture mitigation and unsuitable soils. These are typically items that. You know, while working with a third party, they don't always pick up these type of allowances, but. Given our extensive work history and reconstruction and new construction. There are a lot of these type of allowances that need to be considered as part of the overall project. And then lastly, as it relates to the construction schedule, we are, it is, all these numbers are. With the assumption that the, the building of the additions is going to take place throughout the school year. And that will transition us into. Basically the project timeline and scope. So overall, big picture here. Starting in the spring of 2021. Working through August of 22, we have building additions at Hanking, Lion, Springman and Westbrook. In years 22 and 23, primarily in the summer. We're going to be doing massive interior renovation work at all the buildings. Again, I've kind of talked through how Springman is its own animal. So. Springman is the one project that we kind of tweaked a little bit based on the design. And so that's going to be broken up into five phases and we're going to start that first one in 21 and then the final phase in 2025. And then as we wrap up the two consecutive summers of interior renovation work. The future projects from 2024 through 2027, with the exception of Springman, really just kind of include. Some, some roof work. Based on the general condition and lifespan of the roof that was noted as part of FGM survey work. Okay, so this first phase, as I kind of went through, that includes the additions. At Hanking Lion, Springman and Westbrook, we are currently projected to be out to bid in February. So. We have one more estimate that we're planning to pump out. Towards the end of the year here at the construction documents or CD stage. But for all intensive purposes, our plans right now are to be out to bid in February. For board to award contracts in March and then pending permit approvals, MWRD, IEP. Village appearance zoning, all that. We are hoping to start construction in April of 2021 on all the additions. Okay, this last slide as part of working with Eric and the rest of the finance team. To understand, you know, especially with this first bond issue, what the total costs are going to be. We've taken the numbers that are going to be projected for the calendar year of 21. And I've broken them out here. Per school and combine that with the projected architectural and engineering fees. To get a total of 52,924,709 dollars for the calendar year of 2021. And that's pretty much it. Eric?
Dave, thank you. That, that was great. Yeah, just to remind the board, I asked. Dave to focus in on, because this is going to be a multi calendar year project. For our first bond issue, as we look toward the next couple of agenda items. If he can talk to us in, in calendar year terms, because Liz is recommending and as we've done in the past or issuing. In around January, I think it will help just keep our focus to the calendar year. So obviously that'll look different per fiscal year, but, but I'm hoping that number will sort of align to the first bond issue.
Does anyone have any questions? Oh, yes. Scott?
I just want to remind, reason that you're talking about calendar year and bond issue, Eric, is because we have statutory rules. That we have to spend the money within a certain amount of time of issuing the bonds. And that's why you're talking about that, right?
That in addition to, I thought it would be helpful for the board to. Yeah, yeah, I don't, you know, in fiscal year, summers span fiscal years and so as to not further confuse you. If we're going to issue every January, I figured if you heard from Dave, we'd spend X amount in 21 and then you hear from Liz. We're going to do our bond issue in January. It'll cover us until the next bond issue.
Okay, does anybody else? Mike?
I just want to add one thing to that conversation, which maybe you'll be coming back to it Natalie, which is the CFAC recommendation. It's the, part of this is shifting, as we discussed last month, shifting that $20 million. From internal district funds to the end of the project, which drives. A slightly different decision-making process on the front end of the project. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of why some of that logistics was occurring.
Okay, yep, we're going to be hearing from CFAC next. Any other questions or comments?
Now I'll just, I'll just add, you know, I've asked Dave to come back tonight just to give us an update now that we've had some reestimation. I, next month will probably do it once again, because next month. May be the last opportunity to get in front of the board with, you know, summer, summer of 21, calendar year 21. And then the amount that we're going to put in the parameters resolution. That I'm going to ask the board to approve in December to allow us then to go to market. And issue. So just to, just to give you a reminder, we'll do this once, once more next month. Before we kind of go to market and go to bid and get going.
And I would just ask the board, as they're looking at the slides. One of the things we talked about in the subcommittee meeting last week was the items that are value engineered can be toggled. So if you, if you feel strongly about a specific topic. I'd ask you to reach out to Dane and Eric or myself and, and even four of us, we can talk about that specific. But we wanted to make, I wanted to make sure that the board had. The ability to weigh in where value engineering was occurring, because there may be an opinion out there that we want to make sure we, we hear. So don't be shy about asking those questions. You know, the decision-making is by the board, not by the team, and it's important for everyone to be aware of that.
Are there any particular? Value engineering items that, that you're concerned about?
If you want to go back to that slide.
Dave, you'd have to share one more time.
Is it the budget slide?
That's that one there. So, you know, when we talk about accepted value engineering options, I think Dave mentioned there was probably more than just these. But if you feel strongly as a board about, I don't think anybody's going to feel strongly about painted precast.
Well, and actually the reason I'm asking is what caught my attention was the reduction in square footage. That seems like, I, I don't know how much we're talking about. It's a big number in terms of the, the. The value that you've listed, the, you know, a lot of money, but how much is it in terms of square footage are we, you know? What is the reduction? If you can tell me that?
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not going to give you that, but I'm sure Dave or Scott or Steve, sorry, will give you that information. But the one thing I would point out, for example. Eliminate outdoor classroom elements. That's one that stuck out to me to say, huh? Is that something we as a board would want to weigh in and say, we think outdoor classroom elements are important? And we want to include that while excluding something else possibly. So I just want to make sure. That the board has an opportunity to look at these things and I'll let, I'll let Dave and Eric weigh in on, on the, I did review all of these items that you see here. None of them stuck out to me as major outliers, but I don't, I also don't want my opinion to be the only opinion that weighs in on that.
Just to give it a little more context, along the, I don't know, the, the design period, there were certain things. That were actually added in that, that the architect said, hey, you know what? Really? It makes sense to do blank. And we put it in as we went along the process, but then as we reestimated. As you can see, we're, we're, we were over budget. So these were a list of things that we said. Okay, that would have been really nice to have. But more importantly, what we really wanted to fight for, which still has us over budget is. The eighth classroom at, at, at Lion and the two extra classrooms at Westbrook. Because you're already erecting this wing, you're already going to put on so many rooms. It's really very. Cost effective at that point, if you're. If you can afford it to execute. So along the same lines as Mike. Those are actually alternative bids that will find out what the contractors would charge us for them. And depending on how the bids shake out, we either may be able to afford those extra classrooms or we might be in a position where we're. Over budget after the first year and I still, me and Dr. Deli still may come back to the, to the board and say. Given where the bits fell, before you award your final contracts. Would you like to execute any of these and make some adjustments? So there's options for the board. And we'll lay it all out for you before we ask you to vote in, in the early spring.
Diane, you had something you wanted to say?
It probably isn't important anymore, but I, I just, just going to ask if someone can remind me what the outdoor elements were that the classroom outdoor elements?
For instance, at Hanking, there's a, there's a new, you know, sort of a sprawling, a landscape with. A hill that, that actually may act as a retaining wall. And the idea came up, wouldn't it be nice if there was some seating there for, for an extra 25,000? It'd be great. But when you sort of weigh that out, when you see that we're over budget, we say, maybe we can't, can't afford it. And that, that's just to give you the example of what was in that, that package.
Thanks, Eric.
And then Dave, the, can we share that number? The short answer to your question, Natalie, was it was a significant amount of money for, for a small amount of square footage per classroom. But what, I don't remember.
Yeah, it was about 100, 100 square foot per classroom.
Okay.
Which were designed to be originally 1,200?
I believe that's correct. And according to FGM's calculation, I mean, there's, there's still acceptable size.
So they're still large and much larger rooms than, than we've seen.
Okay, that, that's what I needed to know.
But as another example, glaze, reducing glazing. Dave, help me with the percentage of glazed glass that's being reduced in these additional classrooms.
It's about five, it's about a reduction of between five and 10% square footage total.
Thank you.
Okay. I know this is a really nitpicky question and I know that you won't have the answer right now. But when I look at the relocation of the Springman elevator. I know the students who are going to be using that and will relocating it. Be a barrier for the students who might need to use that elevator by relocating it. I assume. It was planned to be put in a certain place for a certain reason. And I just don't want to move it without knowing that. The students who need to use it will be able to use it in the way they need, need to.
Without knowing all the specifics in FGM, I gave him the night off tonight. I apologize, but it was actually. Less called for, given the fact that we did not move the main offices over to Washington. So, you know, as that redesign of Springman sort of came to light. And Dave was off, you know, reestimating. When we went back and looked for, for cost savings and just to, they said, actually that the whole intent of that elevator was when we were going to. Have the main offices moved. So actually they, they don't think that it's going to impact us much.
Yeah, that's an example, that's an example of one that's not technically truly a value engineering option. That's one that's a scope change.
All right, understood. I just had to ask it just for peace of mind. So thanks for the answer. Wasn't expecting one tonight. So thank you. Anybody else? All right.
Yeah, no, I, I do want, Dave, I keep finding value, please. I know what's coming down the pipe in the next few years and keep finding value.
Well, you know, just. We've, we've had in the last few months, we've seen a lot of, of great. Positive feedback from contractors about upcoming work for this next year. I mean, I can't tell you, almost every time that I'm talking with these guys, they're like, what do you got coming? What do you got coming? And what do you got coming? A few projects that have gone out to bid already for next year have been bid very aggressively. So I'm. I'm hoping that that will still be trending.
Can you put that into percentage terms?
Well, it's kind of early still. It's only been a couple of, couple of projects that have gone out. But I mean, I, I just know that based on the general feel and how things are going between. Public versus private jobs right now. I mean. It, I'm expecting a very competitive bidding season, especially for this next year. So, you know, hopefully. We can, we can turn this first round of projects around and come in under budget, which then helps. Present us with a better opportunity to, you know, incorporate some of these things into future phases.
And the question I always ask Dave, materials costs, how are things looking?
You know, I, I got, I got Nick on the line, so I know he, he deals a little more on the private side that deals a lot with material, but. I mean, really there was some lumber shortage, but for the most part. It's, it's pretty status quo. I don't know, Nick, if, if you've got anything to add on that.
Yeah, I'll jump in. So, you know, from a material cost perspective. Wood lumber have drastically. Rose in the last three to four months. They're back on the downward trend. Fortunately thing with school construction is wood is not a heavily used material. So structural steel, on the other hand, is, is at a very stable price. So from a structural steel and like age metal perspective, we'll see very good costs as it relates to bidding. One other thing to point out, you know, I think Dave, are you carrying a 10% design and construction contingency right now?
It's 10% total, so it's five and five.
Okay, so, and that's something that will continue to evolve and trend down. As the construction documents get put together. So, you know, in our experience. Dealing with large scale referendum projects at schematic design and design development, then working into construction documents. You know, the evolution of the, of the numbers could fluctuate up and down, but the closer we get to bid day. The more refined and tighter the numbers become because contractors are guessing less and. Cost estimating groups are projecting less. So I'm, I'm very confident that this is going to end up where the district wants to see it. And I'm cautiously optimistic that it's going to come in much better, which is going to provide some capacity for. Other spends of dollars within the, in the district projects.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. A little bit of a silver lining to the circumstances we find ourselves in. Let's hope we can take advantage of all of that. Thank you for joining us. And unless anybody has any questions, we'll be moving on to the CFAC recommendation. I, I just want to thank the members of CFAC, those of us, those of them who are joining us tonight. For the recommendation that they gave to Dr. Deli about referendum debt and the impact of the pandemic. So. I, again, thank you for your work and for your service to our community. And on that note, I'm going to, I believe, turn it over to Eric.
Yes, thank you. So recently CFAC assembled again to put together a revised recommendation in regards to referendum debt. And before I relay that information to the board, yeah, I'd like to also thank CFAC for their, their time and their. Expertise and their membership. That's Amy Kahat, Jason Kayes, Nanette Ross Meredith. Richard Crutzfeld, Betsy Nelson, Marvin Lutz, Steve Toomey, Daniel Toy, Alex Kamelwitz. Scott Nelson, Rita Schu, Dr. Deli, myself. We, we met and used the first half of a meeting in which we were going to talk about. Beginnings of a new five-year financial forecast and essentially. The group ended with a recommendation to Dr. Deli and I'll, I'll go over it. Right now with you sort of verbally, and then in the next agenda item. We'll, we'll see those numbers play out in, in, in the recommendation. So. You know, since, since obviously CFAC met and they made their recommendation. For, for what that looks like, things have changed. And so they'd like to revise the, the timing of debt in order to take advantage of these new. Low interest rates. And revise the timing of the district's funds, but fund balance contribution. That's what you heard Mr. Corman. uh speak to earlier. And so um this can be achieved through the following. So issue more debt sooner in the schedule than previously contemplated, thus locking in the benefit of currently low interest rates, accelerating the debt payment schedule, thus shortening the duration by two years to 2040 rather than 2042, resulting in an estimated $22 million in total savings to the community over time. Delaying the use of fund balance, that's really a $1.2 million contribution from O and M that Steve and myself will make sure we save up over time. And then a $20 million contribution from fund balance, that's 21.2, saving that for the end. It's really for the end uh last three years, which is what I'll say more minor, mostly roofwork. And this change uh that CFAC's making will preserve district fund balance for a longer period of time, which is important to consider for adverse financial impacts of the pandemic and other financial challenges, certainly uncertain uh times that that we may go through. Um, and then we also get to earn albeit a lower interest rate on on that fund balance that we're going to hang on to for for a little bit longer. And there's a there's another option uh that we can go into with Liz, but I'll leave it at that. And and unless there's any questions, we can move on. And Liz's presentation will really help sort of exemplify of this recommendation. But but if there's any specific plan, this be glad to take it.
Eric, can I just add that uh by using this new revised schedule, we're not uh going to be spending more money by issuing earlier. I want the community to know this is going to save them a lot of money over time.
That's right.
Okay.
Well, if and if I could just add for, I guess, yep, for Tom Robb, who's listening, any any good news like this, we we should absolutely find a way to get this into the community's hands, because this is an important part of the referendum that we discussed earlier this year, which was we would do everything we could as a board to work to reduce the amount of money that was going to be needed, but to get everything we need for these buildings. And I just hope we take advantage of that. I know Kathy will be thinking about that and and you, Eric and Dane. Uh, but it's it's important to get that messaging into the community, because it'd be easy to forget it for 20 years, and no one's going to care in 20 years.
Agreed. All right, I think you can go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Elizabeth Hennessy to join us uh from Raymond James, the municipal advisor for the for the district for the board. And she met with with CFAC and uh helped us shape and and those some of those recommendations and has incorporated of those into to an updated presentation, which I'm going to ask her to to share with the board.
Thanks, Eric. Good evening, everybody. Um, let me make sure that you can see this on the screen.
Yep.
Okay, great. So um, this is just an update. It reflects what we shared with CFAC. Um, I think I talked to you a little bit about our market dislocation last March and how rates have come down. In October, we had a huge amount of supply, record-breaking supply of municipal bonds getting into the market before the election. And uh things have been a little rocky since the election, but uh this doesn't show what's really happened last week, which is that rates came down. And um you know, they came up a little bit with the good news that uh we were going to have a vaccine for COVID. But then uh really, I think the thing that's driving rates down is the bad news about how many cases there are nationwide. Uh, and you know how that's going to impact the economy. Bad news in the economy positively impacts the bond market, meaning lower interest rates. So here we can kind of see where we've been, the highs, the lows, and now we're getting back uh down and into these very low interest rates. It's volatile, though, as you know, news is popping every day, whether it's election-related. And now a lot of eyes seem to be focused on January with the runoff in Georgia to determine whether the majority of the Senate's going to stay Republican or maybe switch. So with all that, our referendum options on our initial uh the plan that we discussed with the community was a total project of about 149 million 580 and 119 million of that is bond proceeds. 9 million 380 of it is non-referendum bond proceeds that would be issued in 2024. Capital outlay, as Eric mentioned, of 1.2 million, which is about 150,000 a year from the O and M fund and a cash contribution of 20 million. So this, we call the promise, and we'll reference this, because this is what where we got the numbers that we shared with the community about how much this would cost the taxpayers. And it was based on interest rates in November of 2019, right before the board approved the resolution initiating the public question. And we had market cushions in there for bonds to be issued, you know, a year later in 21, 22, 23, and 24. And at that time, the directive of the board was, let's stretch this out and try to make the impact on the taxpayers as low as we could on an annual basis. So we were looking at annual payments of around 7 million 57 a year, and that's an important number to keep in mind as we go forward. So the original capital outlay, as Eric mentioned, used 20 million of fund balance right up front in 2020 and 21, then 40 million of bonds in 21, 34 million in 22, 27 million in 23, and 18 million in 24 for the total 119 million. So after discussing with the board last month and CFAC, we moved that 20 million to the end. And I think that makes a lot of sense for the reasons Eric and CFAC mentioned, uh, given the uh ability to hopefully earn interest um on those funds invested at higher rates and use the bond proceeds first, given how low interest rates are right now, taking advantage of this market. So this option looks at 60 million in 21, 35 million in 22, and 23 million in uh 2023. So this is our accelerated plan, and this was CFAC's number one recommendation. And the payments are identical to what we saw in the first year and and all through the schedule uh per the promise to the community. However, the big difference is we are shortening debt up by two years. And even a little more than that, when you look at this last payment, is only 1.7 million. We still have cushions in here, albeit less than what we were looking at earlier. We've got a interest rate cushion of 50 basis points for the 21 issue, 75 basis points for the 22 issue, 1% for the 23 issue. There's no 24 issue here. So this option saves the taxpayers over 22 million versus the promise, what we were looking at. Why? Because we're taking off the last two, almost three years. Options two and three are the full 23-year repayment plan um with bonds 60 million in 21, 27 million in 22, 22 million in 23, and 10 million in 24. So here's what this looks like. This takes the annual payments down from that 7 million 577 number that we looked at in both the accelerated option and the promise, down to just over 7 million. So it's more like 7 million 57 million 40 a year. So this um keeps the debt with the initial 23 years, but lowers the annual payment. And then option three is what we call the leg-in level debt service, where we have a lower payment here in the 2020 levy year. Then we go up to that level payment for the remaining 22 years, and that is a little higher, uh because we're keeping the first payment artificially lower at 7 million 105 approximately. So hopefully you can read the screen and to see kind of the metrics of the promise uh versus the annual payment over 23 years. So I will say the average annual payment in option one reflects the zero payments at the end of the schedule, which is why the annual payment looks so low, but it's going to start out at that 7.5 million, which was consistent with the original promise. The 20th, uh option two, which is level over 23 years, that has annual payments of 7 million 38, and the leg-in has slightly higher payments. So, you know, we compare what we told the taxpayers. Um, I think best to come down and look at these two lines that say the debt service for 2020 levy year for taxes paid in 21, impact on a $500,000 market value home. And then looking at the next year, so we can make an accurate comparison on that leg-in option. So the promise for that $500,000 house was about $469 per year. If we do the accelerated option, it's also going to be $469 per year, but it ends almost three years sooner. So the total debt service over the life of the bonds, principal and interest, instead of 175.9 million, which was the promise, is that's where it's the $22 million less, 153.5 million. So we contrast that with the level option for all 23 years, where the annual payments lower. That means for a homeowner owning a 500,000 market value home, the annual payment's $435 versus $469. But that goes all 23 years. And the total debt service, because of that, even at these lower rates and lower assumptions, is 161.8 million or 8.3 million more in interest than the accelerated option. And then the leg-in level 23-year option is a step up. So the first year, the payment for that home is $366, but then the next year and every year thereafter is $439. Um, so that's a little more expensive in total debt service versus option two. That's about 419,000 more expensive over the life of the bonds. So those were the three options that we discussed with CFAC. And CFAC's primary recommendation was option one, the accelerated, because of the lower interest cost to the community over time. Um, and then they discussed a a little more and said, well, if, you know, the secondary recommendation, if the board didn't like the option one recommendation would be the leg-in level debt service, which is option three. So I'll pause there and see if you have any questions.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. So our financing schedule is to come back with the board on December 14th with that parameters bond resolution. And um we were originally thinking to go ahead and sell the bonds in January of 21 and close in February. And I think that's still a an option, a very good option. Um, I'm going to push you along a bit because the market is really good right now. So by approving that parameters resolution in December, we will be ready to hit the market if the conditions are are good. Um, again, looking into January, most people think if the Georgia election goes Democratic, it's going to mean maybe higher interest rates. Who knows? It all could change next time I talk to you. But the whole idea is to get in the ready position, so we're able to execute the bonds uh with the rating um as early as mid-December. Okay.
And and 60 is 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 right around what we're thinking right now, even though you saw a number from Dave that was in the the low to mid 50s. I think we absolutely would like to capture this lower rate, these dollars, because if there's anything we can possibly do to help the project move along before the next bond issue, we'll do it. And if we've got the money in the bank, that allows us to have that flexibility.
All right. Um, Mike, I see you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you. So Ms. Hennessy, one of the things that I've talked about with um the board and as part of the the construction process is, you know, we we have these gates that we have set up, you know, this meeting, the next meeting is on a date certain. You're going to lock things in on a date certain in January, and then with a closing in February. I just want to put out there that I don't want to get hung up on our formal date schedule and then lose an opportunity. We have levers that we can, we can um use to call a board meeting sooner if you start to see the market deteriorate. And I don't want anyone uh through any of these processes to get locked into process. We have to be willing to take advantage of the market, and I think you would agree, there's at least as much a chance that the market is going to go one way or the other based on the election in uh in January, early January. Um, not to mention January 20th. Uh, you know, this is a very uncertain time. So I just want to make sure we are well positioned to take advantage of of the market. Um, this feels like a very unique opportunity, a lot of good news around the numbers. Uh, and frankly, I would take your advice to say, should we be asking for 65 or 70 now to lock in that low rate? And maybe be thinking about furniture options and various other fixtures and finishes outside of what would be maybe a normal routine referendum process.
So, you know, we, the constraints we have is is a three-year construction period. I mean, we've got, I saw in the former presentation, you've got 2021 kind of marked out approximately 52 million uh for 21. You know, I don't see what we're spending in 22 or 23 yet. Those are the pieces of information we need to increase this bond issue. So we really have to have the plan, you know, not bid, not finalized, but we need to know what we're doing throughout the schedule. And that's a possibility to bring a few more bonds earlier, you know, in our schedule. But the other piece of the puzzle is the time that the bonds are outstanding. So I don't think you're losing by issuing the bonds per our original plan each of the next three years. And I was even talking to Eric as things become clear on the construction side, instead of maybe that third bond issue, and if the market still holds, maybe we have just two. So we do have flexibility to change those amounts, uh especially given where the market is today. You know, we've got a Fed who's going to keep interest rates low. As we look forward, we don't see this economy recovering, you know, tomorrow. We are hopeful, we're going to have the vaccine and things will get back to normal, but we've had damage. Uh, so and I think we have the Fed commitment in their meeting to keep rates low for at least the next two to three years or near that zero.
Well, I I would say, I would say this, in in broad strokes, I've seen numbers for 2022 and 2023, and we should be sharing those with you as part of an entire holistic view of of what might be needed when. And it may not be, it won't be perfect. Each year out is a is less fidelity.
Sure.
But you should have that data to be able to help us make the best decision uh this January and then the next two Januaries or or the inter intervening period as needed. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
And Mike, it's all going to come together over these over these next weeks. What we've typically done with the board is ask the board to approve a parameters resolution, allowing us to go up to a certain dollar amount. So if the board's flexible, even in those weeks leading up to the final issue, if Liz says, okay, this really makes sense, we would, you you could give us that authority. And just, you know, um, we typically ask for either the board president or board representative to be available the day of, and me and Liz and Dane will check them with the board member and say, here's the final deal. We also um have used um um agencies in the past to double-check the pricing. So just so you know, I think we can build in the flexibility um still.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you, Eric. Um, Scott?
So along those lines, that Mike, the same thing that that can occur is, I mean, Liz is baked into her first project in a 50 basis point cushion. I mean, Liz has baked into her first project in a 50 basis point cushion, which the rate you're showing right now for 20 years, 1.39%. Is that what you had on the slide? So 50 basis points like is, is a lot. So that cushion gives us room to raise the ask if we can and need to. And at the same time, we do want to maintain that about seven, was it 7.5 million dollars a year in interest? So that we keep our promise to the community of $469. So that is the one constraint that I really want to be focused on is when we decide, you know, that to issue, if we issue more debt, is to keep our promise about the level payment.
I agree with that. I see a lot of shaking heads going yes, in agreement with that. Let me ask if anybody has any questions about option one versus two and three in the leg-in option.
It's not really a question so much. I just think maybe as a board, we should just talk about that idea of the value of leg-in. I mean, that legging in idea is, I think, simply for the community, right? I don't think there's really a financial reason to do it. It's really more about positioning how this appears and comes out in terms of a tax increase to the community. But I don't know, I feel like we should just talk about, is that important to us? Or is it more about minimizing the total dollars over the project, which would suggest, you know, legging costs a little bit of money to the project? So just probably should do.
I agree.
I would just let you know that when CFAC talked about it, we went around and around in a lot of circles, Jim. It got down to the point, you're talking about $10 a month on a $500,000 home.
Yeah.
So we decided it was better to save the $9 million over the cost of the project versus $10 for the first year per month.
And it's only one year, right? It's only.
A one-year phase in, right? But you could, you, you could do a leg-in on the accelerated option, I think, too, right? You wouldn't have to do the level 23. You could still front load, get to 469 or something close to that in this leg-in to like option one, which is not really one of the options there. But if we don't, you know, at the end of the day, I add some kind of where I am is that the leg-in is just not that big of an amount. So I mean, I, but I just thought we should discuss that because that's a big piece of the decision-making.
Absolutely. Does anybody else have any thoughts, comments on that? So we're all feeling comfortable with option one. I mean, saving $22 million is a significant savings. And as Mike pointed out earlier, we made a promise to be stewards of, good stewards of the money that the community has agreed to give us. And I think this is a tremendous example of that, as, as Mike alluded to earlier.
And I don't think there was any part of our promise that talked about legging in the impact, was it in terms of when we sold, when we discussed? So this is more of like an after the fact, hey, this might be a nice idea, right? It wasn't something that we really marketed upfront.
Correct.
Right.
It was almost a COVID consideration, Jim.
Hmm, I see.
But I mean, we were going to stay with our promise, no matter what we keep doing. But I, the CFAC really, really liked the idea of saving the extra $9 million. Then I just want to emphasize that. Versus confusing the community on why their taxes were going up twice over two years.
Yeah. Right, that's the downside. You have to explain it twice. Okay, that's it. That's good for me.
I want to make sure everybody's had a chance that wants to ask a question. A chance.
And if there's any questions in between time, me and Liz will be back next December, in December, next board meeting to go over these details one more time before we ask the board to pass that resolution. So if anything comes up, don't hesitate to reach out to me.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Elizabeth, for joining us again. We'll see you next month. And in the meantime, if we have any questions, we'll let Eric know.
Sounds good.
Okay. Good night.
Boys.
Thanks, guys.
So that leaves us with the next item for discussion, which is financing of 2021 construction. Eric, you're up again.
So that was, we just got done with, with that one. But there's another one that's all, that seems like it'd be related.
Right, there you go. I'm sorry, you know what?
It's number five, resolution authorizing a tax levy to pay principal and interest without sending limited bonds of the district.
There you go.
Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your, your thunder. Chapman and Cutler, District's Bond Council, asked the board to consider this resolution tonight. I asked Angelique to put a memo together. It's nothing I've actually been asked to pass before, but in essence, it covers an inflationary increase to DCEB for the 2019 bonds that the board issued. And so this is really just sort of a technicality, and it would cover that adjustment for the 2019 bonds that the board passed for, for construction.
Do you mean it would allow us to increase the allowable DCEB amount by inflation? Is that as opposed to being locked in where it was? Is that what you're saying?
It's, it's a direction to the county. But, but in essence, that's the way I understand it. And I asked Liz actually to hang out for this, this agenda item in case she can provide any more clarification.
Sure. And the board actually has passed these resolutions in the past. So when we look at DCEB bonds, we make an assumption about what CPI is going to be in the future. We're always conservative, and typically we assume one and a half percent. This year, so let me just back up. When Chapman and Cutler puts together that bond resolution that's filed with the county clerk, they will only put on that levy the currently known CPI. So each time CPI increases, similar to your aggregate levy that you're going to be looking at approving in December, you need to add a factor for CPI on the DCEB. And again, basically, as Bond Council, Chapman and Cutler says they do not trust Cook County to make this adjustment annually. So that's what this supplemental debt service resolution is about. And, you know, again, because we're conservative at one and a half percent, we haven't had to do these in the last few years because the last one we did before we issued the 2019 bonds was in 2014, I believe. And it covered the few years. But now that we've got the 2019 bonds on, we knew what the 2019 levy is. But for 2020, 21, and 22, we have to make a slight increase to capture CPI in the amount necessary to make the payments on the bonds.
Thank you.
And Liz, we're only capturing CPI. I just wanted, right?
That's correct.
We're not levying higher than CPI. It's just CPI, but we want to make sure Cook County doesn't calculate it wrong.
Correct.
Boy, seems like a good idea.
And in fact, it's actually a little less than CPI because the CPI this year is 2.3%. We assumed one and a half percent. So it's a little less than the full 2.3. Just what's needed to pay principal and interest on those DCEB bonds.
All right.
We've lost most of our audience, so they must be thrilled with this conversation.
Jim, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I, I think for me, I was just misremembering. I thought the DCEB dollar amounts were locked in, but it must have been like locked in, but still available to increase by inflation. Okay.
Okay. All right. I think we can move on.
Thank you.
Thanks, finally. Thanks, Liz.
Thanks, everybody.
That leaves one final item for discussion, and that is our following board meeting agenda. We will be meeting on December 14th. We will have a public hearing, as we mentioned earlier, and about the tentative tax levy. And then we will immediately go into our regular public board meeting. Does anybody have any questions about following meeting agenda? All right, seeing none. That brings us to our second opportunity for audience comments. And once again, we ask that anybody submitting a comment through the link on our website to state their name and connection to our, to the district, we ask that you understand that the board is only in listening mode only and will not be responding tonight, but will provide a timely response in the near future. And Kathy will be reading all comments. Kathy, do we have any comments at this point?
We do not have any comments.
All right. I actually can't remember the last time we had a board meeting with no audience comments. All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to our reports tonight. We have six reports. The NSSED Board Meeting Report, the Budget Status Report, Current Year Financial Projections, Projections Versus Current Student Enrollment Fall Report, Report on Pre-Referendum Expenses, and the Per-Capita School Libraries Grant. Does anybody have any questions about any of these reports? I don't see any questions, but I'm just going to point out something about the NSSED Board Meeting Report. If anybody noticed that their, the Leadership Council made an amendment to, to the articles, to the governing articles, and that is in order to officially change the name of NSSED starting June of 2021, will no longer be known as NSSED, but by their new name, True North. So you can look forward to that in the near future. All right.
Hey Natalie, I got one more thing about the current year financial projections. Eric, are you going to adjust that next month if we are not going to be spending fund balance at the beginning of the project? Showing the deficit. You're muted. Sorry.
That current year, current year financial projection report is for current year. We did not budget for the $20 million fund contribution in FY21.
Okay.
So nothing to.
Okay. All right.
I just said in one, in the enrollment projection, I just thought it was kind of interesting that the actual enrollments as of November was like almost 220 lower than the projection. Does there any just thoughts about that? Or like just what, that's a big number, like seems.
It is. And when you look at it by cluster, it comes heavily from one cluster more so than the other. And what we're looking at are mostly primary students who are going to private schools. We're transferring out to private schools.
Especially when they announce full return early on.
Right. So we can expect that some of those students might possibly be coming back to us.
Right. We're asking the, our demographers to identify how they will consider the impact of COVID when coming up and refreshing our projections. And that's going to be a tough one because obviously this is something we've not done before. But they have been working and we'll see what they advise in terms of adjusting our numbers for next year or if they advise us to stick with the projections that they had originally made for us, you know, because they had made the 10-year projection.
Which I know it's 9:15 at night, but as we consider these extra classrooms we can't afford, we're going to keep a critical eye on that refresh with the demographer because, at least being as conservative as I am, I hate for them to say, oh, we'll never, you know, see those 250 kids again. When in all reality, we do, they move into first grade, you know. Yeah.
Yes, it's an important piece of data that we need to keep an eye on, for sure.
And obviously, that was not anticipated. Those projections are developed for us in October. So of October 2019, all was right with the world, almost all.
And it's mostly significant because it's concentrated the way it is. I mean, that number of students, you know, over eight buildings would be kind of a different story, but still unexpected.
Yeah. This is going to make challenging, planning for next year a challenge because it really is, it seems. So just wanted to point that out. Yeah, okay.
That's a very, very valid point. Thanks for bringing it up, Jim. Any other questions before I ask the final question? Are there, is there any other business that the board would like to bring forward?
Natalie, I might just add a comment. And if you've already mentioned this, then I've already forgotten. But our, we're planning for our next board meeting to be in a remote fashion in December. And I might even go as far as to say into January. I mean, we'll have time to talk about that in December. But part of the governor's new extended emergency declaration actually puts additional restrictions on, on open meetings and reduces the number. So it's, it's another constraint that's been added to the mix. And so I, and also for the purposes of, of putting our legal notices in the newspaper, we need to specify location for that. So we'll, we'll need to indicate in some way, and Eric will work on the actual language for this, that the, the meeting will be held in a remote fashion.
Thanks for pointing that out. Yes, I didn't mention that earlier, but thank you for clarifying that. Any other business? Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Don't move, Jim Baumstark.
Okay, John Aggie.
This is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. May everyone have a happy, healthy Thanksgiving. We'll see you in December. Bye-bye. Good night.